Our training at Sheriff's Department, the TCO is up. It's a thousand dollars so we can continue to have our own jail schools and classes and stuff that we teach, TCO. So I'll be presenting that money. The last item is I'm asking the court to grant me a discretionary extension for the food bids this year due to the COVID and everything. I've talked with Jim. If you can give me a discretionary extension, I can send out to three vendors our food bid lifts and everything instead of have posted and wait and do all the rest as soon as we can get done in a timely fashion. So I'll be asking for that money.
Have you experienced any problems getting any of your food items?
Affiliated who we're with right now has been fantastic. They've worked with us. They've kept us up to date on what foods they're short of. Everything's been working great with them. There's a couple of other companies that will send bids out to them or send out paperwork for them to fill. The only thing different on this as to what we usually do is you have to post it in the papers for so long and everything. On this side of it, we would just send out to banks that they could bid on it, send it back in. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions today? All right, thanks, Judge. And if you'll go, like I say, if you'll go by our before you leave, we'll tell Rosalia that.
I thought we'd email that into her.
Okay. All right. That concludes what I have for today's agenda. Does anyone else have anything concerning today? Okay, let's go over and just a reminder that we will meet this coming week on Tuesday at 9:00 AM. Looking at through the agenda. Ida, do you have things on there that you didn't talk about this morning?
Yes, Judge. If y'all recall, we talked about doing the random drug testing and we purchased 25 of them for the CCL drivers. Well, with this, this came about probably, this is my second year, and apparently they're adding more recording, more restrictions as far as to report to text dot. And the company we deal with is asking us to, if we're willing to do the paperwork and send it to text dot, or if they would do it, it would be a hundred dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred ninety-five dollars a year. So I'm asking the court to allow me to do that. I talked to Monica and asked her that we might need to get a little bit more involved to kind of get familiar with what we're supposed to do because I don't have any idea. And all those reports and stuff do funnel through DPS, of course, and so I'm not really up and aware of what means to be done, so.
Okay, all right. So we and the other about the psych that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions about that? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. The F1 judge is just the, it's their policy. They're going to have to sign off on a policy and procedure that they'll have to follow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Next item on Monday, or Tuesday's agenda is mine. We'll have a declaration update on COVID-19. And don't worry, I don't think it's going to have, wouldn't add anything to it, so I'm not going to have to read anything other than I think we had just decided that whatever changes the governor does on his government, I mean government records, then will follow suit with those. So. Also on that, as far as opening the courthouse, you know, we're scheduled to review that on June 8th. And I, I think that's still a good day to do that. Judge Hugel has worked on and he is submitting a written plan to the Office of Court Administration as far as to have a plan approved to reopen the courts where we can have events that occur here at the courthouse and at the Justice Center. They're still recommending that things that we can do online, that we do online, but some things we can't do, we have to have face-to-face hearing. He'll submit that plan and we'll wait to hear from him on that. So I think June 8th will be a good day. That'll give us a weekend to June to get everything sorted lined out. Also, some of our equipment that we've ordered, hopefully will all be in place by then. So any questions on that? All right. My second item is to discuss the cleaning for COVID-19 and also the cleaning at the other Justice Center. I talked to Sylvia earlier in the week, or maybe last week, that when we do reopen, some of the stipulations were that require additional cleaning people to be available. And so I had asked her to see what she could provide for us and cost that would be to us for the additional cleaning stuff. So Sylvia, if you think about that, can present us, unless you have some numbers now.
No, I'm still going to work on it.
Okay. But anyway, we'll talk about the, because my understanding is between each procedure that we do in court and that, that place where we do a hearing or whatever, it would have to be cleaned before we can have that. And so those are, those are some of the things that she'll, she'll be here Tuesday and maybe have some numbers for us on that. And then I received a call yesterday from the DA, Wallace Hatch, and he wanted to talk to us about the cleaning at the Justice Center. So Wally, I'll get under your.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to preface this with a couple of things. Number one, I don't have anything personally against Ms. Forrest. Number two, if you think I'm here because the guy that cleans my office that I said something to him, I did not. I've only met him once, so I don't know where you got that information. It's incorrect. I don't know that this is going to change anything, but I want my people to know that I did come and talk, and I've talked to Ms. Forrest several times about dissatisfaction with services that she is not providing. And again, I have nothing personally against her. It's become more of an issue with COVID, what causes we have. OCA has said that we're going, as Judge said, we're going to have a subject face-to-face hearing. It's actually starting June 1st, unless your plans in place. But Judge Hugel's taking care of that. I think the bigger issue for us now, and which has been, and I know Judge Wallace said cleaning is subjective, and I would respectfully disagree because I think objectively, anybody knows that you shouldn't be, if you're wiping down surfaces, you shouldn't be wiping them down with the rag that you just cleaned the commode with, which we witnessed being done at one point. Problem now is a lot of the surfaces aren't getting cleaned at all. Our idea of cleaning is not coming in and flushing the commode and emptying the trash. And we have had spots that we have left in plain sight, not in an effort to do anything, but to try to figure out whether or not our surfaces are getting clean, we'll come back the next morning and they're not. It has been suggested that we do it ourselves. My suggestion is if we're going to do that, that there's no reason to pay for a janitorial service. I did not realize there was an automatic raise built into this contract until I've read it, which the courts can do whatever they want, and I'm sure it has some reasoning behind it. I wanted to go on the record, even though I don't think it will change what this is, is that we are not happy, and it is not subjective in terms of normal standards for cleaning a building. And the standards that we've got now will certainly not comply with what OCA says COVID is going to require us to do. My request is that our building be sectioned off from that and that we either have, if it's within budgetary allowances, that we either have two employees, kind of like the city does. When I was there, we had janitorial staff that was actually city employees, and they were there and they worked all day. That's the other thing. The only time I've ever met the new guy, I was at my office on Saturday morning, I believe it was Saturday morning, somewhere around lunch or right after lunch, and he came in to tell me, just so you're not, hear something and you're scared that somebody broke in, I'm the janitor, I'm the new guy, and I'm here. And I said, that's fine. So that's the only time I've ever even seen that person. Now Alma, when she was here, Alma and Maria have been over that building doing outstanding. Alma is not there now. I don't, I don't know why, but I can tell you she cleaned door handles, doorknobs. And I talked to Dana, she was not happy. She is not happy with it as long as Maria's not doing it. Because Maria does it, and with all due respect to Dana, she is somewhat of a junk folk, but I mean, she cleans everything, phone, mouse, all that. You know, our original beef before COVID was, we're just like, our floors vacuumed every day, everything wiped off, the commodes cleaned. It does not even smell clean in there. When Alma was doing it, you could walk in and literally when you walked into that bathroom, it smelled like your mother had cleaned it at your house. I mean, that's, that's how good it was. And that's not happening. And talking to Ms. Forrest has not been fruitful, and so that's our request. There is a way out of the contract, a couple of ways. I'm sure Jim Tyree told y'all that when he made it. One of the things that is a cause for termination is quality of services. And if you look on the second page of that contract, it clearly says that. Obviously, the other one is that it's unbudgeted. By my calculations, and I could be wrong, one of y'all correct me on this, there's in excess of thirty-four thousand square feet in our building at current, again, I can be off on this, however, the current amount that's paid per square foot, that comes to about thirty-four hundred sixty-eight dollars a month, which is roughly forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars a year that's allocated for that building. I don't know what is all that's going to be involved with what we're going to have to do in the courtrooms. I know the city's got somebody that comes in and desanitizes, and I don't know what that costs, and I don't know if that's where it's going to come to.
Jack out there, I don't want to interrupt you, but I did get a call after our discussion yesterday, and we are, there's a company called Ger- Ger- Germaxx, and they are going to give us a quote. They do all the schools and hospitals, and he's going to give us a quote on doing this courthouse, the Justice Center and the Sheriff's Office. And he said they usually do that about every three months. And so on June 4th, he's going to be here at workshop and give us his quote. So we are looking at that, and I think that's a good deal.
Yeah. Part of what precipitated this, we have not been happy for a while, but we have just tried to work along. I've even been, you've even asked me about bags, trash sacks, and I didn't realize I was supposed to be doing that, but I think we agreed to do it. I'm not really, you know, we just want our place cleaned, and we think Alma and Maria were doing a good job. We do not think the others that have gone around were. My understanding, and I didn't check with Judge McHugel before I came in, but he also is the presiding judge for our, for our judicial district. He's in charge of putting together the security part, I guess the US Marshals are the ones that actually set that security thing up for us. But my understanding was, one of those things was that those buildings were not supposed to be cleaned at night, but because there was access, you know, for people to get into the building. I don't have a big problem when it's clean. I'd rather it be cleaned during the day, and Alma was doing that because she was cleaning our office when she actually came in. So everybody was gone. Four hours they were there, I never saw them do, waste any time, working as fast as they could. And, you know, our opinion is that, you know, there's enough currently in the budget now to do something where we would have our own people over there that are not affiliated with the janitorial service that we have right now, and that's what we're requesting. Again, I realize it's in the middle of a budget year, and I realize I've got other much bigger things to look at as a result of this COVID deal, but I wanted to go on the record so I can tell my guys, I've got one that's asthmatic, I've got a couple that are, you know, under the rules, you know, feel like they are in a high-risk, you know, a high-risk group. So, you know, they're more concerned with cleaning. I just don't think we should be responsible for our own cleaning and pay for janitorial services. If we are, then we'll probably, you know, hope that the county would budget us buying our supplies and, you know. And I'd be happy to come back and do this bill again on Tuesday. I don't think that it's necessary unless, although I came on Friday because, quite frankly, I was hoping our YouTube viewership was one, not one hundred. Because what I've got to say is really for y'all, we are the budget people, and that's it. I'll answer exaggerated or overstated, but.
This is the first I've heard of this, Wally. But explain to us again exactly what you would like to do in lieu of what we're doing now?
Well, and I don't know, I don't know necessarily that Alma and Maria can be the ones, because I don't, I don't know what their status is or, you know, in terms of being able to be employed, but, you know, our request is that we either be able to contract with two people, preferably them. In fact, Dana told me, she said, if I could keep Maria and you could get Alma back, then we can either make them a separate contract, may not be affiliated with the janitorial service that we have now, and/or, and this obviously has, and again, I have more knowledge of what this costs, but I realize you can't just put an hourly wage in and say, well, that's what the cost is because you got, you know, retirement and social security and all that other stuff, so it was probably added twenty percent to whatever your total cost is. But ideally would be to have them county employees, and they just be over there all the time. I realize that's where the most cost is involved, but with the new requirements under COVID, they were probably outfitted with the, with the equipment or supplies that they need. It may, in the end, the end result may be, it may be more cost efficient to do it that way. From our perspective is, we actually get the job done. So to answer your question, we're, we're proposing two different things. Either one, that we get two people that are hired by the county that are actually over that building during the day, cleaning and doing what, you know, what has to be done. Or the alternative, that we be able to contract and we, that our building be severed from the janitorial service contract that exists now, and that we contract separately with two people that are dedicated to that building for whatever budget, whatever time of the budget counts, may be supplied with the supplies necessary to do it.
But from what I'm hearing, that would be a great deal more expensive than what it is now, for sure. Just, you know, off the top of my head, I can tell we got two more county employees full-time to clean that office and then buy those supplies for them, whatever they need, a great deal of expense.
As, I don't know that it's that much more expensive on the supplies, because theoretically right now, those are supposed to be built into that contract, from what I read, that they're supposed to supply all that. So again, in theory, that would be an additional cost, it's just that it would be dedicated to that building. You are correct, and I agree. And again, I would be in a much better position to say what the additional cost of having them is. Might not be too much if they work in the hours that they work right now, they're not qualified for benefits anyway. I don't remember what it's, thirty-six hours?
No, sir. As far as insurance, it's thirty-two hours, but even in the policy, it states that if they wanted the insurance, they would be able to qualify for insurance, they would just have to pay for half of it, and the county would pay for the other half.
There are additional costs involved in that. Again, theoretically, if you're contracting independently with them outside of the janitorial service that we have right now, within that budgeted amount, then there would be no additional cost. I would say though, that I'm sure the judge and the court is anticipating additional cost to COVID-19, and that you would, with or without changing the system we got right now, they're going to incur additional costs over there.
Oh, we all have. We all have, no doubt. That's my last item we'll talk about today.
I mean, that's all, that's all, we all know that's all going to go up. And as y'all have no choice, and Dana, but Hugel would be able to tell you better, because we have cussed and discussed, he sits down in Austin and tries to tell rural courts what they feel like they need to be doing based upon criteria that's set up for Dallas County, and you're going, not quite the same thing. The cost is the same to do it, but. And again, I don't have anything personally against Sylvia, it's just the service.
Any other questions?
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I know I've worked very hard for the last year because that's when I took over, and I've heard that about the washcloth and the toilet and all of that. And as far as Alma, I did not want to let her go. She quit on her own accord because I'm doing everything by the book, by the record, and I needed paperwork to be done, and one of them was taxes. She's not documented, and I was trying to talk to my CPA about it, as to what I needed to do and everything, and she quit without even notice. So that's why she left us. As far as, I don't know what was said, I mean, when you brought up my, I don't know what was said, or, I mean, I can't fix things if I don't know about it. I have worked very hard, in fact, I've even worked double, triple time to make sure everything is disinfected. You know, I'm trying to figure out what I can do with Maria, maybe I can move her up and kind of work the way back. There's a lot of, it's, it's very difficult when I'm trying to manage the employees and trying to, especially now with COVID, because they'll tell you, I mean, I've been very paranoid because I too am very scared of this disease or what's going on. So I am working double, triple time to make sure everything is done correctly. Yes, this place, and I've told everybody in this courtroom, this place was awful when I first got my hands on it. I mean, we were on the verge of losing it, and I fought for it. I fought very hard for it, and yes, I had good employees, and Maria and Alma were one of them. And, but when they just get up and quit, and maybe she was scared too, I don't know, but if I'm trying to run a business the right way, I have to do things the correct way. And like I said, I've, I've been buying extra supplies to make sure that everything is disinfected. A lot of things are on hold now because of the wipes and the sprays and all of that, you know. I tried, I don't want to be a nuisance either to say, is everything okay, is everything okay, is everything okay? I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I've put my number out there so everybody can call me and tell me, Sylvia, this isn't being done. Sylvia, I have a problem here. Sylvia, you know, like finding this, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, I've been trying very hard to make sure everything is done correctly. I've been trying to rectify the damage because it was, it was terrible. And I don't know, I mean, everybody in here can tell me now if their things are better or not better. But I've been, I've had this contract now, I guess a year, I'm going to say, I don't know, I have been so, and I've been pretty proud of it because, like I said, things that weren't being done, aren't being done, but I'm not going to do it over, I'm not going to do it all in one shot, I'm trying to do little by little. So, and now with COVID, I have to stop what I was doing to make sure everything is disinfected and wiped down, and, you know, so there's a lot of things that is involved with the business now that, I mean, that you're not aware of. And, you know, when I have employees just to quit on me, on the spot, so there I am trying to already even find somebody, you know, it's, there's a lot to it. It's, it's, it's been a headache, I'm not going to lie, because, you know, I'm trying to please everybody, and I, I understand, I'm not going to please everybody, so I would hate to lose that side of the contract, but, you know, I, it's, I don't want to say it's whatever, but, I mean, I think things have improved a lot, and I'm still working on it, I'm not done. So I just ask that I be given a chance because if, if I don't, I'll never prove myself. So anyway, and that's what I have to say.
Anyone else have anything to say? All right. We'll discuss that further on Tuesday. Any, any regards as far as Wally, and Wally, you're certainly, you know, welcome to be there Tuesday, but is there any need for Wally to come back or have, do y'all have any other questions for Wally, or do you want him to come back Tuesday?
I think Wally may stay very well, Judge.
It was not my intent to come back on Tuesday. I would be happy to come back, but it was, my intent was to kind of express my concerns of what you do, what they were when you went to make a decision on Tuesday. And I also realize that, that our request, you know, to have new employees, however it's done, is not something that y'all would be able to maneuver between Friday morning and Tuesday morning.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not thinking this suggestion is something that can be done like that. I mean, my intent was to let you know our position. But I'll, as I said, I realize this is in the middle of a budget year. It is in the middle of an unprecedented time in terms of almost everything that we're doing, which is affecting cash flow and many, many things, and I understand that, so.
We will address it Monday, and we will talk about it. Like I say, you're welcome to be here, but you've made your case, and we know where you stand, and we'll try to address those things.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the grant for the road, the road grant, the CTI.
Yes, sir.
Every weekend.
Thank y'all.
Mario and the guys have filled out the application and been in touch with Bob Bass and basically had documentation in place that we will submit on Tuesday to, for consideration of that. Anytime you apply for those grants, all you can do is apply. There's another agency or entity that will determine whether you qualify or not. So on Tuesday, yes, on Tuesday, we will have that information available, and I believe y'all will make a motion to approve it and ask me to sign the application, and we'll do that on Tuesday. I did provide the documentation to Jim this morning for him to review, and so if he has any concerns or questions, then hopefully he'll be here. Okay. All right. Any discussion on that? And then the last thing on my agenda is the purchase of PPE for the courthouse and the courts. The main thing on this is Judge Hugel has presented an invoice from Best Window here in Miami about some plexiglass screens that he needs for his courtroom, because those are some of the standards set by the OCA. And so he had talked to Best Window, and they had provided him a quote of, a second, I haven't here yet. It's a little, what I was going to suggest is that we approve it for, the quote is thirteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. And so I was going to suggest that we allow him to spend that amount in. And so I was going to suggest that we allow him to spend that amount, not to exceed $1,500. That would give him, if they get in there and need an additional thing or two, that would give him a little legway as far as the, the experience.
Judge, we've heard these issues with the janitorial service and additional fees. Could be necessary, additional fees for Carlos' one, and needs to affect the glass windows, or glass windows. When this is also done, we're going to, the county's going to spend a lot of money in addition to, for these. Is there any talk or anything about maybe getting some sort of refunds from the state on any of that?
No, actually, I am in the process of applying for a grant through SPAC that comes from the federal government, filtered down through the state and the governor's office, who then filters it down to the local council of governments. And I'm in the process of applying for that. And I do think all the things that we are talking about, because we're also going to have expense for screens for the 64th District Court and for my courtroom. And, and these are not things that I think any of us desire. You know, that's not anything I want to get into. I really don't those things. But in order to operate under the OCA guidelines and standards, these are some of the things that they recommend. So we've got expenses still to come. And so I will continue to apply for that grant. That grant, right now, it stands at $30,000, which, once you spend $1,500 here and $1,500 there, is not going to maybe cover everything that we need. Because we do need PPE equipment, not only for the emergency responders at the sheriff's office, but just for our employees. And, and so those are things that we're going to have to look at, and we're going to have to purchase. Keep those invoices, and if we get this grant approval, then we can submit those for reimbursement. To answer your question, that's the one that we're aware of right now. I would assume that there'll be others coming forward, because, you know, we're not in this alone. Every place is having to do that. And this was also the place I was going to talk to you about, the Germex people coming. They have, I think, a pretty long history, the cleaning hospitals and schools. He was telling us that during, what's your, during the flu season, a lot of times you hear on the news that certain schools were closing for like a Thursday or Friday. And he said, when they do that, their company goes in and does a cleaning of the school. And so they've had a long history of doing that. So he said, because of COVID-19, their business, of course, has greatly increased. He was just reached out, because he said he now saw public buildings such as courthouse as making prospective plans. He recommended, he said, normally the schools and hospitals have their services on a quarterly basis. And so on June 4th, he's going to come and present, hopefully, and give us a proposal of what, what the expense would be. And so, like I said, we want to do what we can to, number one, protect our employees, but also protect our citizens that come in and have, have interactions here at the courthouse. And what I'll probably do is, is at that point in time, get these three buildings, and then we'll ask him to look at the annexes also and see about doing those. But he came in yesterday pretty late in the day, and so we just asked him about these three buildings.
Did he indicate anything about how they clean? Did they come in and disinfect with some sort of a balm, or what?
It's like a four or five step process. And, I mean, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, y'all were in there with me when he said. I know one, one part of it is a spray deal. They have like a backpack on with these deals, and they spray everything down. But they do a couple of steps before that, and then they do something else. And he said, all I remember, he said, there's some kind of deal they apply that holds the, the cleaning stuff in place longer than it normally would. And so...
Well, could they use that in place, in between cleanings on the courtrooms?
I, I don't think that would. I, I think these will be just quarterly cleanings. Something that we can say that every quarter, we know that they have come in and, and did that. I don't think it is going to affect, of course, it'll affect, because if you've got something already good and clean, then it's easier to keep it clean than to have to start from scratch and just start cleaning on your own. So I don't, I don't think it would take the place of that, but I think it would greatly make our cleaning process easier.
Because the city was doing that, and that's what I told the judge about, Judge Hugel. And he asked me, he said, well, so if somebody comes in and leaves, have they brought new, or will it kill what they've, if they've touched? And I said, I could tell you.
And that's why I asked him to come on the 4th, to present his, as Paul says, his bill. And so he can tell us, and he can answer those questions better than I can. He did leave me a brochure down in the office, so y'all will welcome to stop by again. Like I said, he was just the sales rep. What brought him here was Eddie had contacted him about the school and about Eddie's building. And so they came and did a, what they call a site survey, to give a proposal. What he told us yesterday is, because of the nature of what they do and the demand for what they do, that they haven't always been able to send someone to do a site survey. Then if we could provide an outline and square footage of what we wanted, then he could give us a, a walk from there. I covered Craig's deal. I have purchased already, from what I can, masks. Because even when we opened back up, they recommended that we ask people to wear masks. And some of the OCA guidelines require that they wear masks. You know, if you're going to have a requirement like that, and someone shows up without a mask, then you're going to have to provide one. And so I have purchased some masks from different vendors. Also purchased gloves. Purchased thermometers, touchless thermometers. I have purchased touchless hand sanitizers dispensers and things like that. You know, with their demand for those, the price of those has greatly increased, so...
For your court or for all the buildings?
Well, the hand sanitizers at the entrance of the buildings and here, like, I figured we'd put one by the elevator on each floor. So that someone riding the elevator can sanitize, use the elevator, and so forth. And what I ordered is basically what I thought we needed here and stuff. So there may be additional stuff that we have to, in fact, Karen Davis called me, and I gave her one of my thermometers. So I ordered a couple more. But all those, you know, I don't know how long this is going to last, you know. I don't know how long we stand for this going to be in place. But one thing this thing has taught us is to sort of be prepared, so that if it does happen again, then we have those hours available. Does anyone else have any questions on the courthouse or courts or the PPE equipment that we'll need? Or cleaning for those offices? Anything like that? And then the next item, the sheriff has gone over his item, but he will add the...
Radios.
Radios to that discussion. And then our last item on Monday's agenda, or Tuesday's agenda, is from Commissioner Precinct.
I have talked to Diane Martinez several times. We talked about doing some stop happens at board. She just wants to come on Tuesday and discuss more about some trash dumpsters and some trash stuff. Nothing for a second.
Any questions to Harold?
Judge, I'd like to back up just a little bit to the sheriff on the radios. Did you have a cost figure on those radios?
Sixty-seven fifty.
Sixty-seven fifty.
Coming out of commissary.
Sixty-seven?
I have this for 20 radios. We're rotating during each shift. Do you have any comments or questions before we adjourn?
Judge, I'll say this, you know, this, this COVID has had put, has put this courthouse in there. Sixty-four, I mean, the district court goes in a pretty tough spot, and really all the, all the defense fitting with the county. I don't know what we'll decide on Tuesday, but it's going to take a while, I think, to decide what's the best way to go on that cleaning. Because, you know, all the, all of our buildings, the precinct barns are the same precinct offices, are the same threat of, you know, you know, that COVID, we've got people coming in also. So it's, it's something to be addressed for sure.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know how within, I don't know, Monday, Tuesday, but it's going to be a big decision whenever, whenever we make it, whatever we decide.
We know the cleaning has always been a divideable and an issue. And then you add on top of that this virus, and it just complicates it.
And the worst part is the sheriff's office.
Now, Will, and since you brought that up, Mario, about our, we'd like to commend our employees of the county. I mean, we pay them to do the job, I understand that, but they have performed well during this, this virus and this pandemic. For the most part, they have come to work and done their job and showed their diligence and their loyalty. I think we should, ought to give them a recognition.
I know, I know, in our, in our precinct, we're not even meeting in the barn anymore. We're just coming in and picking, going to work.
We do too.
We're not even associated, and that's, that's kind of bad. And we can't talk about, you know, what we've done, what needs to be done.
I was terrible.
Talk it over the phone, you know, just over the radio. Men, men use the phone to say, off the radio, but it sure is put in our, in our operation.
Well, the sheriff's office, like Harold was saying, you know, that's a, that's a tough environment to, to fight a virus or even a cold or in the flu season. I mean, it's always something. They've done a good job out there.
So we're talking about how we're doing at the barn. Everybody hits the door a little before seven, they go crank the machines up. And then we all stand around at the front of the barn door, but it's like a circle. And everybody's going back and forth, and we just kind of talk as everybody passes, and we never get really close enough.
Yeah, and that's not good. I mean, there's times you really need to communicate better, but, you know, right now, we got to do what we have to do.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further, then we'll stand adjourned. Wish you all a happy Memorial Day in the Sable, and we'll see you all on Tuesday.